I'm Dawn Kirk and I am here today to talk to Commissioner Kristin Stevens to learn more about what's going on in Laramie County. And believe me, I know there's a lot, so I'm sure that there's a lot for us to learn. And so I am very excited to welcome you today. Kristin, what have you got going on in your world that you want to share with us?
Sure. Well, thank you, Dawn. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. So there's a lot always going on in the county. We are, I'm running for reelection, so that's one thing that's going on in the county. But we've done a lot, you know, when you run for reelection, it gives you an opportunity to sort of reflect on the work that you've done. And so that I've, I've been able to do that as you, you know, prepare literature pieces for walking and canvassing. You know, thinking about the work we've done as a board of commissioners, we've done a lot of work around air quality. When we first got elected, we, we came in right away and worked on oil and gas regulations. So we made very tight oil and gas regulations so that people in our community weren't materially affected by oil and gas operations. So really some setbacks and some places where people couldn't do oil and gas operations. And so we were really happy. We had promised to do that during the campaign and we went right ahead and did that. We put a moratorium in, we, you know, engaged with the public on what kind of oil and gas regulations they'd like to see. And so we did that right away. We've had a lot of people in the community ask us about air quality as well. So we know that oil and gas contribute to that, but also transportation does. So we're really working on monitoring the air quality that we have, really looking for methane leaks on oil and gas operations. And then really advocating at the state and doing what we can locally to make sure that we're taking care of you know, low level ozone and other air quality issues. So that's, so that's the thing we've been working on. I think that what we get asked about the most is housing issues. You know, we know housing is unaffordable for many folks in our community. And so housing is something we've definitely worked on as well. And we, most recently in the past year, hired a housing stability coordinator. That's going to help us sort of evaluate some ways to create more affordable housing in our community, to make sure people stay housed. So that, that's ongoing work. I don't think that there's one magic solution to the housing crisis that we're facing. But there are a lot of little ways we can affect that. And one of the things that we've done is we're, we're working on our land use code. So allowing accessory dwelling units, you know, making sure that people aren't tied up with the bureaucracy around, about, around housing. And but, but there's still a lot of work to be done. So I just got appointed to the Middle Income Housing Authority for the state. And that's a group that really is working on what we call middle income housing or housing for our workforce. So think teachers and first responders. And so how do we create more housing for those folks around the state? So there, there are a lot of things that we're working on. I work on transportation a lot. My fellow commissioners, Commissioner Kofalos works on a lot of human services. Commissioner Shadak McNally works on a lot of issues around mitigating for fires and environmental issues. And so I think we, we make a pretty good team together. But that's just a few of the things that we're working on.
Yeah, you know, something to keep you busy and out of trouble.
Well, you know, that's always good, right?
Right, right. You know, it strikes me that several of the things you said are related, right? Like every single one of these things is impacted by the other and by the other, which is what I have enjoyed in the last four years is knowing that there is this, there's like these focus areas, but also the fact that you all have this information and pieces that come together the way that it does, given that, you know, you might be more in the weeds on transportation. And then the impact that that has on, on fire is a big deal, right? You know, and I just appreciate how I've watched that work on other issues. As you come together, you all bring this great perspective.
So you do realize how integrated all those issues are, you know, and we're working on climate change, you know, climate action. We have a climate action plan. It's called Climate Smart Future Ready that we're working on in the county. That, those initiatives were started by Commissioner Kofalos. And then when Commissioner Shadak McNally and I came in, we were, you know, jumped on board. And so we've phased, you know, we did a lot of engagement with the community. We're in a phase now where we're working on implementation. But you're absolutely right. I mean, the oil and gas production and doing those regulations, that's going to help with climate. Any work that we've done on transportation and really promoting multimodal transportation helps with climate, also helps with air quality. And then, you know, I think about environmental justice issues is, you know, for, for so many, I mean, decades, maybe since the Industrial Revolution is the people that have paid the price for pollution and bad air quality. And, and some of this, these things that have happened in our communities. Our poor people and often communities of color suffer the most from this environmental degradation that we see. And so how do we do better? Because you're right, everything is integrated, but how do we take care of our people better? How do we make sure that we don't see these health disparities in our communities? So yeah, the more work I do, the more I realize all this work is interconnected. And you know, as Democrats, I mean, we care about all these issues, right? We know that interconnectedness, so we don't just worry about the environment. We worry about people too, and we want to take care of people. And we want to take care of people that are vulnerable. And there are so many folks in our communities that are vulnerable. And we know climate change hits vulnerable people more than it hits people who are wealthy or affluent. So people who are unhoused, I mean, if there are big storms and bad air, and that's going to affect them a lot more. Or if they're in substandard housing, same deal. And so, you know, we owe it, we, we have this, these core values that tell us that this, we need to do all this work simultaneously.
Yeah. Well, so it's, as you were talking, one of the things that I remembered that was really cool that I was part of a couple of months ago was sitting in. And there was someone from one of the Laramie County offices, sitting on a committee with a handful of people with, you know, other nonprofits mostly, talking about how we're planning for emergencies and specifically around disabilities. Because that is one population of many that, you know, has like these additional things that might matter in an evacuation or an emergency that we don't always know to ask or to plan for. And the fact that they're working on that as part of a cohort was super fun to see. And it struck me that a while back, I mean, 2013, I think, I remember talking to a friend of mine, Martha Milchman, who is working on a project right after the floods and how that impacted people who spoke Spanish. Because there weren't services available and the communities that were the most devastated. Like, you know, years before they got to go back to what had been their home, didn't have services in their language. And so on top of the emergency that impacted everyone and losing their home, which is a bigger impact than me not being able to drive across town. There was the language barrier to even start the conversation and to know what was needed. And so I was, I was happy, you know, 10 years forward that we are talking about things proactively. And knowing that we're diving into that in all these different rooms was really a relief. And also, you know, I could tell from the other people in the room who hadn't been part of that conversation before. So many people don't think about it, even for themselves. You know, you don't, the things you take for granted, and I don't have an emergency plan that includes all these things that have changed now that my life has changed. So it's awesome to see. And I appreciate like how that is coming from all levels right now in Laramie County. It's really nice.
Yeah. I will say that we've done a really good job with our, helping our communities be more resilient. But you're right, we absolutely can do better by some communities. And there, there are people that have been left out of these conversations around emergency management, around, you know, how to prepare for an emergency, around a lot of things, honestly, but, but it is great. Our emergency management folks, our sheriff's office, I think we have a lot of alignment in the county around how we can do better. And so really making sure that our materials are always available in Spanish. You know, you can click on our website now and it can translate web pages into Spanish. But really offering some programs in Spanish about preparedness and building a resilient community. Because often, you know, we don't necessarily have, we have the resources to, you know, help put out the fire. And we get those resources from the federal government and the state government. But when it comes to rebuilding community and neighbors helping each other, if you don't know who your neighbor is, if you're not in contact, if you don't know about resources in your community, you're not going to thrive. You're not going to be resilient like you need to be. And so really kind of building up these communities, especially in, in smaller communities like Red Feather Lakes, for example. We learned that through COVID, you know, now they have a food pantry. They didn't always have a food pantry, but so things like that, where we can get these neighbors together and they can really help themselves, help each other. And we can help them in turn. So I think we're doing a lot of great work around that. But yeah, there's definitely work to do. And, and when you're talking about people with disabilities, same situation. There's people who might have to get out of, who are in wheelchairs or don't know how to get out of their homes or are older. You know, maybe there's connectivity issues. I mean, that's one of the reasons we want to broadband in these rural areas in the community in, in Laramie County is because, you know, some people don't have broadband. They don't necessarily have good cell phone service, so communicating during an emergency can be really difficult. So, but, but I'm excited. I'm excited about the work. And I'm excited about how innovative people in the county have been around trying to figure out some of these problems.
Me too, actually. It's super fun. And it's, it's fun also when I leave our community and talk to people who are doing work, you know, anywhere else. And, and we are doing things that other places don't even have on their radar, which is really nice to see. And so thank you really for all that work that you've put in and how you've done the work and how thoughtful you've done the work. Because it is showing up in the way that we're able to do things that other places have barely even started the conversation on trying to solve for some of these challenges. And, you know, everything you brought up isn't unique to Laramie County. We might have our own version of housing challenges. But, you know, it's, there's other places that are like, we don't know, we don't know what to do. And it's also fun to know that you're sitting in on these conversations. Because there are places that have done some really interesting things, like for housing. The, the employee housing solutions that are out there have got a ton of really interesting things that we could absolutely do, but it's nice to learn from somebody who's already done it. So we don't do the whole process, including the ups and downs. So I'm hoping that maybe that comes.
No, absolutely. I think that that's the beauty of local government is there's sharing. You know, there, we're not competing with each other. We're happy to learn and share what we've learned with other communities and vice versa. So we can get those, learn those best practices. We can borrow ideas. And so it's really fun to go to conferences or to connect with colleagues to say, hey, we have this problem. How are you dealing with this? And so it is, it is one really nice thing about working in, in government is we're, we're open books and we want to be transparent. And hopefully that helps others do their work too. So that's to me, one of the joys of, of working in local government is we're all in the problem solving business. And so.
Yeah, we're going to have to deal with it one way or another. We might as well, you know, get ahead of it where we can.
So we've, I definitely have called colleagues across the state. How have you dealt with this issue? What kind of ordinance do you have? How do you deal with funding childcare in your community, for example? Like, that's a, you know, question I often ask. Do you have a dedicated funding source? Do you use general funds? Do you, you know, how, how do you deal with some of these problems? Because it, it's helpful because you know you're not alone. And everybody else is tackling these same problems, that's for sure.
For sure. So I have two things at least that came to mind. One I want to dive into is mental health. Because we have done something that I believe is still unique in Laramie County that I really want to talk about, because I don't think everybody knows that it is something special. Or even what we've done, since it's still a pretty new thing. So would you want to tell us more about what's happening in, in that world?
Yes, I would love to tell you. Yes. So the voters of Laramie County voted in a sales tax that funds behavioral health. So behavioral health, we, you know, concerns mental health, but also substance use disorder. So it's, it's twofold. And we were grateful, I mean, the first time the, the initiative came through, we, we didn't vote for it as a community. And so I wasn't on the Board of County Commissioners then. But staff at the county level went back and talked to people in the communities and say, hey, why, why didn't this pass? What, what do you want to see from an initiative like this? What, what works for you? What are, what, what are you dealing with honestly in your own families? Because so many of us have had that, whether it's family or friends, mental health issues. You know, I think that every, I'm glad it's more acceptable now to say we all have had those issues at one time in our life or another, right? I mean, there's, and so how do we help each other? How do, how do we help each other get through those times? And, you know, what does it look like to, to have dedicated funding and what do we do with those dollars? And so, you know, the initiative passed, I believe it passed in 2018. Half, half a penny, and that goes to fund mental health in our, in our community. And initially the dollars, a lot of the dollars went right out the door to do mental health, to help promote things that were already happening in the community. So we wanted to make sure that there were some of these dollars that, that went out right away. So into the schools, into programs that are working on behavioral health and substance use disorder. But then some of those dollars were saved so we could build the behavioral, behavioral health facility, which has now been built and opened in last December. And it has services for people who are struggling, people who are in crisis. So it's kind of an urgent care, if you think of sort of an urgent care for mental health. And so people can go day or night, it's open 24/7. And they can go to the facility on Taft Hill. Just, so it's just south of Fort Collins on Taft Hill. And it's not too far from the landfill. So Trilby and Taft Hill is, are the cross section. And people can go there when they're in crisis. We also have, our first responders can bring folks who are in crisis that they encounter as well. So there's, there's multiple ways of getting people there, but there are facilities for people to get help if they're having substance use disorders. So people who have addictions and, or people who are going through a mental health crisis. And it's been well-used. We knew there was a need in the community, but there are people, right away, people knew to go there. And that's great. So we did a good job of making sure that people knew it was there. And so we still have those grants that go out into the community for care in the community. Because we know that that work is still being done across the community. But then there's also these dedicated funds for this, this center, this facility on Taft Hill. And so you're right, it is very unique. People are, I don't want to use the word jealous, but many people are like, how did you do that? How did you, how did you get the support for that? I think that Weld County is curious about it. We certainly have had other counties across the, the state and, and honestly, across the nation that are saying that that might be the only way to really get good mental health facilities in their community is really to prioritize that. And what better way to do that than saying that we have this funding and that will specifically go to mental health? So, so kudos to the people who helped pass the bill and kudos to the voters of Laramie County for really understanding how important this is.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, I, I've heard from multiple perspectives of people who've used it and people who work there. And people who are waiting anxiously, very excited about it. You know, and my work comes up from time to time, every day. And, and it is just a really positive experience that everybody's sharing. I think that the only like thing that I am hearing consistently that still remains is just that we have a great need. And being open, like it was busy day one. And then that's that.
Like within the month, right? Yeah. I mean, it, yes, almost how did we live without it in a way? How did we live without it in the past? I mean, there was a walk-in center that, on Riverside and Fort Collins. But, but I think they've doubled sort of the people they've seen come through the doors in that facility.
It's amazing. And, you know, it's, I also know that, given that it's only been a few months, that there are people I talk to every day who didn't know we had this, right? That they haven't had to look it up and it's not their job and, and they haven't needed it yet. And so, you know, to know that there's still so many people who are just learning about it. And we're already at capacity. And that there are so many different services already provided. You know, the, the med checks and the support that happens that is taking pressure off the ER and our other first responders, like the ripple effects of that are a big deal. It's, I mean, I think that those are some of the things that we can just start putting our arms around to see the benefits as it ripples. And so I'm excited about that part as we start telling that story.
Right. No, I, I agree. And, and really sort of normalizing mental health issues. Making sure that people are not, don't think they're alone and that, that it's unique. Because like I said, I, I can't imagine that there's one person in our community that hasn't somehow been touched by a mental health or addiction disorder in their lives. And so I, I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's great that we're addressing it. And, you know, when you talk about the ripple effect, we have co-responders that go with the sheriffs and it, and a lot of the police departments locally too. But that will go, go alongside because we're thinking about policing in a different way. Community policing where we're addressing mental health issues, where we're not just arresting folks or putting folks in jail who might have, who really are not necessarily criminals, but are just having and something that's episodic that can be fixed through, you know, therapy and, and mental health support. So, you know, it, it really does ripple. And it, it's changing people's hearts and minds about, about what it looks like to take care of one another.
Yeah, I, I love that. I also love that the facility is really pretty. I mean, the location is phenomenal. And I know that there was chatter back when the location was first decided. And then, you know, the second I walked in and looked out the window, I was like, yeah, we're, I'm over that right now. Like it's a great view and it always is going to be a great view. And that's remarkable. It's got space to grow and sounds as if that's still like a very real potential need. It's a great space inside. And that's nice because it's changed it from just a medical or a public safety thing. And that is another way that we make it accessible, right? Because it's, it's a different thing that makes it so that people who are, you know, not wanting to tap into a source because of one of those other, you know, barrier, one of those other levels, this allows that. And I also just learned this week, I think, about how, because it's done at the county level, instead of through a health system, but with the partnership of a health system. It has a lot of the benefits of both. So, you know, people are not having to worry about the cost like they would, that we know keeps people from calling 911 sometimes, right? And believe, I've done that as a human who should have called 911 more than once. And I was like, I can't, I can't afford, you know, whatever they say is going to happen. I've got to figure out a different way. And so like the fact that this changes that. And then you've got this, the resources of the county to help navigate, you know, all the great case managers and, and resources that help people figure these, those things out long-term. And then you've got the health system who knows how to do the billing and handling all of that to make it sustainable on that side. It's got, it's saving us money and I can't wait to have that dollar amount. Like I, I'm so excited about having a dollar amount for that. But like, that is a lot of money that I just added up. As a human, I know it's, it's huge as one person. For our community, there's that impact of it being for all of us that are not paying it out of pocket. But, you know, the return on investment is huge. So go us.
Absolutely. No, it's definitely something we should celebrate. You're right, though, it, that can be a barrier for folks is, is navigating the, your insurance and the costs. And so I think that we've lowered those barriers for people. We also have people present that can help people. There's still folks who don't have insurance. We know that that's still an issue. So maybe people qualify for Medicaid and we can help, you know, get that going. And so I think that there's a lot of options for people who, where cost was a barrier. And that, that's really important because, I mean, we, we can't really separate mental health from health. I mean, it's all health, right? And so, you know, we're, we're looking to, to fix those barriers that people have experienced. And so, but you're right, then our county staff has all kinds of resources that we can help people with, you know. Even food assistance and other kinds of help. So, yeah, we're, it's, it's, it's a great model and I, I am excited. And it's definitely something to celebrate.
Yeah, and, and we should. I mean, it's, it is really cool. And here we are at the very beginning celebrating, which doesn't happen very often, you know. Usually a couple of months in, you're like, I don't know, we're, we're still trying to figure it out.
Well, and I'm sure there will be growing pains in some ways. And you're right, we probably, you know, we had always envisioned it as a campus. And so there is a second phase that will help be more tailored to young people, which we know is a need. But people of all ages can go in right now, especially with the sort of urgent care model that we have there. So we're not turning folks away. We're making sure that people get the help that they need when they go, when they go at the doors. And you're right, the, the facility itself is, is beautiful. It doesn't feel institutional at all. It's facing the foothills and it feels like a healing place and it is.
Yeah, it's so nice. So I'm sure that there are things that you want to do that you haven't been able to even touch yet with all this going on. So I'm wondering, what does that look like? Since you're running again, I'm guessing that there are things on your list that you'd hope to get to start.
There are, there are. Yeah, I, I mean, there are so many things. You know, we live in a great community and there's still things that we need to work on. I, as I said before, I work a lot on transportation. So one of the exciting things we're working on is Front Range Passenger Rail. So I know, and, and it is, and your reaction is, is about the reaction I get from most people when I talk about Front Range Passenger Rail, because I think people have wanted it in our community for decades. And so the thing that we're pretty close to getting there is really exciting. So, so getting that off the ground is one of the things that I want to do. And I've tried to help in the, in every way I can at the MPL level, the Metropolitan Planning Organization level, we're working on it. But, you know, trying to work with the legislature and the governor's office to look at what funding looks like. But, I mean, the beauty of it is we have existing rail that we can use. Freight is not running as many coal cars because there's not, there are not as much coal-powered plants, which is also a good thing. And so Amtrak has run programs on existing rail before. So we don't have to build out as much infrastructure as we might normally. So that's what makes it very possible, very doable and sooner than later. But there is still some funding we need to look at and there's still some things that we need to do to make it happen. But, but it does feel real. And so that's definitely one of the things that I'm working on is, is how to get, and then really connecting our community. So not everybody will be along a rail line. So what does that look to connect folks in Weld County, like Greeley, to, to the rail line? And so that really means that we need to have really good transit systems, really good bus rapid transit to be able to get people either to the busting, which is, you know, inner city bus transit, or to get people to the trains. And so make sure we're connecting people because we know that lowers greenhouse gas emissions to, to support transit. We know that it helps people who are, who don't want to rely on cars anymore. People who really want to make a difference, who maybe can't afford cars. People who are, have disabilities and anybody who just, you know, kind of wants to improve the environment, honestly, or not sit in traffic. So, so there's a lot of great work that can be done around transportation and I, and I really enjoy doing that work. And I, and I really enjoy doing that work. It's something I did when I was on the Fort Collins City Council. Um, I worked on transit and transportation there too. So it was sort of a natural fit to keep, just keep working on it. Um, and, and so that, yeah, so I think that there's just so many, I'm excited about all the possibilities. There's mountain, mountain rail too. And just to really connect our state would be, is one of the things that I really want to do. Uh, you know, housing, like I stated before, we definitely want to still make a dent in housing and how do we create more housing in our communities? And how do we work together, the county and the cities to, to create more housing? So, uh, that's always top of mind. Um, I think funding, figuring out how to fund childcare too is a really big thing. So whether that, that might look like a ballot initiative to have a ta- a sales tax that would fund childcare. Because we know that's hard for families and we know that, uh, that having high-quality childcare is important to, you know, young people and, and, and helping them grow and learn. And so, uh, and we know it's a big stressor in families. And so, uh, we have, we right now have a waiting list for the C cap, the childcare dollars at the county level. And so there really is, there really aren't enough dollars to help working families. And so that's something we need to address soon too. Um, we're looking at water. So we're creating a water master plan in the county. We have over a hundred watt. If you'll believe this, we have over a hundred water providers in, in Larimer County. So some are very small. And, and, and just take care of small communities or, you know, uh, or agricultural water. And, and some are big municipality, um, mu- municipal providers. And so, uh, how do we get a handle on our water portfolio, what we're doing around water, what we're going to do if we have drought conditions? Uh, do we have the right infrastructure? Do, um, you know, just so we're making sure that we're conserving water and we're doing our, our best with the water that we have in, in Larimer County. And so, um, gosh, probably, there's probably other things that I'm not thinking of, but those are the things that come to mind. So yeah, there's plenty of work to be done, more work on air quality, right? Because I mean, you look outside and you think we have good air quality. But we, in the summer months, we definitely have a ground level ozone issues. And so, um, you know, we really need to keep working on this too.
Yeah, Kathy Kip was here a couple of weeks ago and she mentioned that we're what, sixteenth or seventeenth worst in the nation. And I just can't make that make sense. It, you know, I'm like, oh, that doesn't work. I mean, and to, so I was like really glad to hear how much is already happening because, you know, every bit matters. And so, you know, if you find out that something's a problem and that's when you start working on it. It's like I just did. Um, you know, it's, it's scary. But to know that, that, you know, there's all these ways that you're thinking about it and making a difference on it is, is really helpful. Cause that's not something that matches with the, all the things we think of when we think of living here in the front range. It's this beautiful, healthy place and we gotta have air.
It is, right? But yeah, I mean, and, and because you, you can't see those ozone problems. But you know, a lot of it is the sunshine and the topography. And, and so there's a lot of things that contribute to that where it just sort of sits against those foothills. And, um, and so the EPA has designated us as in serious non-attainment. And so we, you know, we're, we're actually required to work on it. We, we need to work on it because it's important, but, uh, the federal government also is like, yes, you must work on it. And so, so those of us in the non-attainment area, and that's basically all of Weld County, a lot of Larimer County and a lot of the Denver and Denver suburbs are in that non-attainment area. And so we have, um, for example, I belong to the Regional Air Quality Commission, so I'm a member of that group. And we work on a lot of programming to figure out how to lower these, you know, ground level ozone, um, emissions. One of the things that we, you know, people can do, it, it, it's worse in the summer, I will say that. So July and August are pretty bad. So we've done things like have free fares on, on buses. Um, and that's, that, that's throughout the state. But also something people probably don't know is that, um, switching your lawnmower from gas to electric or battery operated, um, is a really important piece of that. So there's a lot of rebates to help you switch over to electric or battery powered. And yeah, so mowing your lawn for an hour is the equivalent of, uh, driving your car for three hundred miles. So it's bad. There's not, there's just aren't emission controls on your mower. And so you know how it smells really stinky when you put your, your, uh, lawnmower in the garage? I mean, that, there's off-gassing is, is bad. And so, you know, that contributes, there are a lot of contributors. I mean, oil and gas is a contributor to, to that as well. Um, but you know, having people make simple changes is also really important in figuring out how to, how to deal with, with, with some of these ozone issues. But there again, the, the double bonus, it also helps with a lowering greenhouse gas emissions. So.
And, and I just learned, like that was a big one. I'm like, wait, nah, like that's amazing. And I love that kind of stuff. Cause I'm like, oh, well, that makes it totally worth it. Um, because, you know, I would have never probably learned that through any of the other things that I do. Um, cause I don't think a whole lot about my lawnmower.
Right, right. Um, well, I will say one thing about, like I have an electric mower. I, it has a cord. I have a small yard and that works. Some people do the battery operated, but they are a lot smaller and they're easy to maintain and your garage doesn't smell like gasoline. So there's other benefits, uh, but there's a lot of rebates for not only mowers, but, uh, hedgers, you know, tr- trimmers, all kinds of um, just those small, uh, things that you were previous sort of gas operated that now you can get in electric or battery operated versions. And so, uh, those, I think that, uh, Home Depot has some of those rebates in the summer and so does, uh, Ace Hardware. And so I would encourage folks to look for those. But, um, the program through the Regional Air Quality Commission is called uh, Simple Steps Better Air. I think that's what it's called. And so there's a lot of things that we can do to make things better.
Look at that. I didn't expect to be learning that. And your timing's amazing, right? I mean, two or three days ago, we had a bunch of snow on the ground and I would have been like, I wouldn't, I'm not thinking about that at all. Now it's beautiful again. So it's great timing. I love it.
Yeah, it's not too far away from mowing time. And not have to mow at all, right? But.
Yeah, that's right. That's another thing to go back to the water that you were just talking about. See.
Yeah, we probably do, I'll need to get rid of our, our lawns at some point.
Yeah, there's some really great kits out there actually. So there's options.
Yeah, the cities always have classes on how to do it. D, DIY kind of style. So. Great. I've looked, the lawns that I've seen that have gone to zero escaping are beautiful. Just beautiful.
We've been, uh, trying, it's a process for us. We didn't do it well. Um, so I can tell you what not to do. We're still in the process of figuring it out. But we are, uh, adding clover to our yard. And so it's not that we got rid of the grass, but the clover has better cover. And, um, doesn't require water and it helps hold the water for the, for what you have. And so I was like, yeah, that's a, that's worth it.
Sounds smart. Yeah.
Yeah. Of course we got the wrong kind because I didn't read all the article, just like half the article. But, you know. I recommend reading the whole article.
A lot of information out in the world. I read everything.
That's right. Well, um, I imagine that we could probably talk all day because there are so many great things that you're working on that I love. And I want to learn all about it. But also I know that you've got, I probably need to eat dinner and rest at some point with all that you've got going on. So I'd love to have you back at some point to talk more about uh, what's, what else you are doing. Um, because we just scratched the surface and I'm so so glad that you are doing this work to, uh, just help make Larimer County a place that works for all of us. It's pretty awesome.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the work you do. And, uh, yeah, I mean, we're all, we're all on the same boat. And, you know, and we're all trying to figure out how to make things better. So I have no illusions that I'm doing it alone. I appreciate all the partnerships that we have, whether it's the school districts or it's, uh, the, the cities and or honestly, the nonprofits in our communities, which do such heavy lifting. So, um, and the advocates, people who are advocating. We had a lot of people pushing when we did oil and gas regulations. So it, it takes a village and, uh, and I love our village.
I do too. It's also nice to hear you, uh, you speak up about how helpful it is to have people speak up. You know, we don't always hear the full loop of that, but it does help us know what's important and get informed. So I'm glad you mentioned that. Yeah. Well, thank you for everything and, um, would love to talk again soon. And, um, I hope that everybody here today learned something like I did. I actually learned a lot. And that, um, there are ways for you to get involved in things that we have going on, including Kristen's reelection campaign. Um, in the next few months, there's, there's going to be people that we need to show up to vote and to know what to do and why it's important. And so this is another reason to get involved. Um, thank you for everything.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Paid for by the Larimer County Democratic Party. Six oh four South Mason Street, Fort Collins, Colorado, eight oh five two four. Nine seven zero six eight nine six three nine one. Not authorized by any candidate or candidate committee.